Okay. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, sorry, for Tuesday, May 27, 2025. The first order of business is Pledge of Allegiance. Item number three is roll call, please.
Councilmember Falkingham. Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Homa.
Here.
Councilmember Maddox.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Wiley.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg, a quorum is present.
Thank you. I need to, a motion to excuse Councilmember Falkingham.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councilmember Falkingham is excused. Item number five is the approval of the May 13, 2025 City Council Regular Meeting Minutes.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Yeah. Any changes? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item number six is a public hearing. And a request by, I'm gonna get this wrong, Tim Palben Patel of Sri Gajnan. Am I close there? Okay. Thirty-six-hundred LLC for a packaged intoxicating liquor, a Sunday package intoxicating liquor and original package tasting license at thirty-six-hundred South Big Bend. Has anyone signed up for this public hearing? Okay. And did you wanna, we've spoken before, did you wanna make any additional comments at this point?
Nothing, no.
Okay. And then the next public hearing is the proposed 2025-2026 fiscal year budget for the City of Maplewood. Is there anyone that wanted to? Okay. We'll move on to item number seven, which is the first of two public comments. Has anyone signed up?
We have Ray Reed.
Good afternoon, or I guess evening now, how are you guys? My name is Ray Reed, Representative Ray Reed. I represent the communities of Brentwood, Maplewood, Richmond High, Shrewsbury, Avden, and portions, like maybe two streets of Ladoo in our state legislature. And I just came to say hi, first of all, and thank you all for your amazing service. Local, local government is so important to the St. Louis region. And just to update you guys on what's going on in Jeff City, I'm very proud to represent you guys. Growing up in Brentwood, going to Brentwood High School, you were taught to hate Maplewood a little bit, but my wife and I live in Maplewood now, and I gotta say, this is a very vibrant community, and I'm incredibly proud to represent it. Two of my major priorities this session was fully funding the foundation formula for our public education, because both Brentwood and Maplewood are the gold standard in public education. So I'm very proud to say we fully funded the foundation formula for the 26th state fiscal year. And another fight I was very proud to stand in is there's, there's an attempt to eliminate grocery tax statewide, and very proud to fight that, and that's dead this session, and I'll be even more proud to kill it again next session. Because grocery tax is really everything for Brentwood and Maplewood. And as you might have heard today, the governor called us back a couple hours ago to come back for a special session. His whole thing about it is he wants the state to give about $900 million to build the Chiefs a new stadium. After, after how session ended with rolling back, or an attempt to roll back abortion rights statewide, and their attempt to, well, they're not attempt, they actually did it, roll back Prop eight, which guaranteed paid sick leave across the state of Missouri. I told the governor and the Republicans, I'm not inclined to give them a vote on anything, but because this package can also include funding for St. Louis after the storm recovery, I'm tempted to be a present vote on that, but right now I'm a no vote, and, you know, they can conjure up the votes in their own caucus if they wanna give more money to billionaires. But yeah, very proud to represent Maplewood. Any questions? I'm always available, I'll be around after to say hi to you guys.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for dealing with the state legislature. I've known several representatives over, and it's, it's an uphill battle when they don't, especially when they don't respect our vote. And so someone's got to do that job, and we thank you for doing it. Especially the grocery tax, as we all know, without any alternative to, to the current tax, is completely unsustainable.
Absolutely. And this is the second trip I've made to municipalities and the district, but I'll be around for as long as I have the privilege to serve, just to update you guys on what is going on in Jeff City.
Okay, we appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else signed up for the public hearing?
We also have Samuel Pickering.
Howdy.
Hello, I'm Samuel Pickering. Thank you for having me here today. So yeah, I just wanted to talk about zoning a little bit. So, I mean, first off, this, I just wanted to say that this bill 6279, granting the permit for a coffee shop, I am absolutely 100% all for that. I know my dad is very much in favor for that. Commerce is good, commerce and, and, you know, one of the good things, one of the great things, really, about living in Maplewood is we have so many interesting things just within walking distance. I love being able to just set off from my house, and within a 10-minute walk, there's plenty of things to see and do, and we need more of that. I wanna see more of that, I wanna see more businesses, businesses in our community. You know, if we look at our official zoning map over there, over 50% of Maplewood is zoned for a single-family housing. And I believe we should encourage more mixed-use zoning, get more commerce in there, more high-density zoning. And then just another thing, I live on Weaver Street, and I've heard there's talk of maybe turning the vacant lot there into like maybe a basketball court or something. I don't think that's a great idea, just because it's right next to Deer Creek, and it's constantly flooding, especially during the summertime, when you would wanna be out and playing basketball and things like that. I think a better use for that land would be something like a public garden, planting wildfires, rewilding the area, something like that. So yeah, thank you for your time, thank you for all you do, you and all the good people that work for this city, you know, keeping the lights on, the water and gas flowing, all these things that we take for granted. Thank you.
Samuel, as you probably know, we're going through the comprehensive plan process, so your input is, is very important. And there'll be more meetings that we're gonna hold to get more public input, so look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else signed up for the public hearing? Public comment, I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay. Announcements?
We got a couple. Our library is getting really close to reopening, so yay, that's wonderful news. We have June teeth event coming up, June 21st, 11 to 1 at the Family Aquatic Center, really close by. And summer concert series, June 25th over in Ryan-Hummond Park, 6 to 8 p.m., Wednesdays. That's what I got. We got other announcements?
I, I'd like to add to that as well, just a reminder, this Sunday, June 1st, at Living Room, is going to be the Pride and Joy event, and that is gonna happen rain or shine. There's a lot of really great stuff going on, super kid-friendly. They're going to have sing-along dance party, toddler yoga, drag story time, and DJ, so that'll, that'll happen from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m., rain or shine.
What's the date?
Sorry, Sunday, June 1st.
Okay. Any more announcements? Okay. Move on to unfinished business. The first one is Bill 6279 Final Reading, granting a conditional use permit to Hunter Ifland of Kenso Coffee to operate a coffee shop in the SR Single Family Residential District at 2500 Sutton Boulevard. And we need a motion to table the bill to hear the findings affect.
Motion to table the bill?
Seconded.
We have a motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Please read the findings affect.
The mayor and city council make the following findings of fact for the petition for a conditional use permit to allow a cafe at 2500 Sutton Boulevard. A, the proposed use complies with all applicable provisions of the zoning code. B, the proposed use will contribute to and promote the community welfare and convenience. C, the proposed use will not cause substantial injury to the value of the neighboring property. D, the proposed use does comply with the overall neighborhood development plan and existing zoning provisions. E, the proposed use will provide, if applicable, off-street parking and loading areas in accordance with the standards of the zoning code. F, the proposed use will not substantially increase traffic hazards. G, the proposed use will not substantially increase fire hazards. H, the proposed use will not overtax public utilities. I, the proposed use will not place an undue burden on municipal services. J, the proposed use is consistent with the design, construction, and original intended use of the structure. K, the proposed use serves a community need, and no detrimental effect will be made upon the character of the zoning district in which the conditional use is proposed.
At this point, I need a motion to approve the findings of fact.
Motion to approve the findings of fact?
Seconded.
We have a motion to second. In terms of discussion, I know that the petitioner had talked to the neighbors. Were they able to, you know, the only concern that I think that we had was, was with regards to parking on the street there and not impacting the neighbors. And so, do you know if any, is any action being taken by the city to, to help the residents there?
No specific action beyond being available for additional patrols after the time of opening, just to make sure that driveways are being kept clear. I'm not sure if the petitioner's worked out any additional marketing or promotion items that he wishes to share with us.
Okay. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
The findings of fact are approved.
Thank you. Now I need a motion to bring the bill back for a vote.
Motion to bring the bill back to the table?
We have a motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we need a motion to approve the bill.
Motion to approve the bill?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Okay. Bill number 6279 is approved as ordinance number 6073.
Thank you. The next item is the final reading of Bill 6280, Amending Chapter 56 Zoning, Article 2 District Regulations, Section 5621, 211 CB 1 District, to allow for entertainment uses and amend other permitted, conditional, and prohibited uses within the district. Need a motion to approve the bill?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Okay, 6280 is approved as ordinance 6074.
Thank you. The next item is the final reading of Bill 6281, Amending Chapter 56 Zoning, Article 2 District Regulations, Division 1, Generally, Section 563, Definition of a Family, Section 5637, Conversion or Change in Uses of a Single-Family Dwelling, Section 5638, Multiple Family Occupancy of Single-Family Dwelling Units Prohibited, and Section 5640, Blood Banks Prohibited in All Districts.
Motion to approve the bill?
Seconded.
We have a motion to second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Okay, Bill number 6281 is approved as ordinance 6075.
We'll move on to new business. Item A is a request by Tim Palben Patel of Sri Gajnan, 3600 LLC, for a packaged intoxicating liquor, a Sunday package intoxicating liquor, and original package tasting license at 3600 South Big Bend. Need a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
We have a motion to second. In terms of discussion, is there something that you wanted to address? Okay. That's fine. We need a roll call vote?
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
No.
Okay, the liquor license is approved.
And Item B is Resolution 2519, authorizing the city manager to enter an agreement with SWT Design for the Yale Park Improvement Project.
Motion to approve the resolution?
Seconded.
We have a motion to second, is there any discussion? How far along is the, has there been any design work done yet?
No, there hasn't. We'll wait until the contract is executed.
And when would we?
The preliminary design is available through the Parkmaster Plan, but the refinement to that has not been started yet.
So they'll have a, a meeting with the public sometime in the near future?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Resolution 2519 is approved.
Okay. And this starts a series of resolutions appointing members to boards and commissions. So Resolution 2520, Appointing Nikki Bissell to the Designer Review Board for a term expiring June 30, 2028.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Any discussion? She's done a great job so far, so looking forward to having her back. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Okay, 2520 is approved.
Resolution 2521, Reappointing Fiatch Makunda to the Human Services Commission for a term expiring June 30, 2028.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Motion to second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Okay, 2521 is approved.
Resolution 2522, Appointing Andy Nelker to the Human Services Commission for a term expiring June 30, 2028.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Motion to second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Okay, 2522 is approved.
Resolution 2523, Reappointing Kim Gifford to the Library Board for a term expiring June 30, 2028.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
We have a motion to second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Okay, 2523 is approved.
Resolution 2524, Appointing Teresa Rogers to the Library Board for a term expiring June 30, 2028.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Motion to second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Okay, 2524 is approved.
Resolution 2525, Reappointing Kristen Spencer to the Library Board for a term expiring June 30, 2028.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Okay, 2525 is approved.
Resolution 2526, Appointing Marie Long to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term expiring June 30, 2027.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 2526 is approved.
Resolution 2527, Reappointing Johnny Lewis to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term expiring June 30, 2028.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 2527 is approved.
Resolution 2528, Reappointing Beth Newman to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term expiring June 30, 2028.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Resolution 2528 is approved.
Resolution 2529, Appointing Patty DeForest to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term expiring June 30, 2028.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Resolution 2529 is approved.
Resolution 2530, Appointing Matt Correll to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring June 30, 2028.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Resolution 2530 is approved.
Resolution 2531, Reappointing Stefan Denson to the Sustainability Commission for a term expiring June 30, 2028.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Resolution 2531 is approved.
Resolution 2532, Reappointing Thomas Van Schaik to the Sustainability Commission for a term expiring June 30, 2028.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Resolution 2532 is approved.
Resolution 2533, Establishing the Term of Office for Mark Vandennacker on the Planning and Zoning Commission is expiring June 20, 2028.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes.
Okay, Resolution 2533 is approved.
Just a point of clarification, or question, rather. Are appointments to the Parks and Recreation Commission shorter in the first term than a reappointment?
Not unless it's a mid-year appointment. So if we have a midterm, a vacancy appointment, the term may be shorter.
Got it.
Otherwise, all terms are three years.
Okay, and I, I assume that's what, that, that's why the one appointment is 2027?
Yes, and we elected to assign that person to that vacancy due to the fact that that was not their first choice, to allow them greater flexibility in the future should they wish to pursue a seat on a different commission.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, next item is Bill 6282, the first and second reading adopting the budget for the City of Maplewood, Missouri for the fiscal year July 1, 2025 through July 3, June 30, 2026.
Motion to approve the bill?
Seconded.
We have a motion to second.[1637.68] In terms of discussion, would you kindly describe the changes in the final draft?
Sure, just to quickly summarize, we made some adjustments to our capital items, deferring several of them until the following fiscal year, making some adjustments also between parks, capital, and capital improvement, half-cent sales tax. We continue to make operational cuts, including some fairly substantial projected cuts to overtime for staff, and we also discovered some calculation errors in our new budgeting software, which was important for us to discover before we brought this in front of you. It was double-counting education pay for police and fire and miscalculating social security for our police and fire as well. So, when we were able to reduce those costs and unduplicate them, we came out ahead with a gain of approximately $83,000 in our fund balance for the general fund for next year.
Does anyone else have questions?
I just have a thank you to everybody for rassling that budget under budget. Wow. Yeah. I'll echo that, even though our budget constraints seem to be tighter each year, it becomes easier to understand, at least from my perspective, what we're doing here and where you guys are making changes. So, I think that's testament to the work that you guys have done in the software as well. So, appreciate all the work that went into it.
Yeah, the decision to migrate to that new software and the better clarity we have about where things are going where and what the projections are is really just fantastic. And I feel very nerdy to be that excited about budget software.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, bill 6282, adopting the budget for the city of Maplewood, Missouri for the fiscal year July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026.
Motion to approve the bill.
Seconded.
Motion, a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The third and final reading will occur at our next council meeting. Item number 11 is the council and staff reports in terms of mayor's report. I spent three days as a structural inspector in the city of St. Louis last week, red, yellow, and green-tagging buildings, and we are extremely fortunate here in Maplewood to have avoided the devastation that I saw in the city of St. Louis. So, and anything that anyone can do to help the people that are currently without homes, without food, without water, I'm sure it would be appreciated. Word one, report.
I just want to say thank you to our city employees, including fire and police and public works, as well as just our other city employees. I know with the tornado I saw, pretty immediately, we were helping to support Clayton with some of the tree limb issues and road access. And then also, thank you to our public works for all of the work they did going around getting branches that were down, because the mayor is very much right. We were very lucky to miss out on all those big problems, but we still had a lot of trees, branches, other crud that still had to be collected. So, just thank you to our city workers.
And Ameren did a good job, too. Anything else from word one?
Nothing further.
Word two.
I have a question before I make my comment. The sidewalk company that was recently doing work on Zephyr, was that because we said something to them, or did they actually come out on their own recognizance to do more reclamation work?
I'm not certain. I can find out and follow up with you.
Because if it's, if it's just they came out to like make it better, kudos, and we should remember that next time we're doing this kind of work, because the amount of times somebody has torn up our street in the mud, and then they have a reclamation crew come, and it's a terrible, they've done a beautiful job, and it's all seeded and hay, and it looks great. And so, I just, if we asked for it, then I'm glad we did, and if they did it on their own, then great, we should keep using them. I was so thrilled.
I would just like to say congratulations to the MRH class of 2025. You have a bright future for you, and I hope you, some of you stick around Maplewood.
Well said.
Anything from word three?
Nothing to report.
Okay, city attorneys' report.
I have nothing this evening, mayor. Thank you.
City manager?
A few items to report. As many council members have mentioned, I would like to express my commendation and deep gratitude to all the city staff that responded as a result of the tornado on May 16th. Our rescue squad was deployed immediately and went into rescue operations, not only in Clayton, but also in the city of St. Louis. Our police department has continued to provide mutual aid to the city of Clayton for traffic enforcement and control, and our public works crew has stepped in to help both Clayton and Richmond Heights with storm cleanup. Those efforts have ended effective last Friday. We've heard from our neighbors that they don't require any additional assistance or mutual aid from us, but they have asked us to calculate our costs should we receive some storm relief from FEMA that would extend back to us, because obviously, we paid our workers to go contribute to that recovery and cleanup effort. So, we're tracking those costs closely should we have a state of emergency finally declared and FEMA assistance coming into St. Louis for that. Additional items, as we discussed, I believe it was an entire year ago, the city is moving forward with making the lump sum distribution of the last amount of funding from the dissolved police and fire pension trust into loggers. We are making that distribution proportionally based on the number of employees in each department. The calculation is available there in the memo. We transferred the funds last year out of corporate stocks and bonds into government securities per state law. Those have been sitting there for about a year, as we have worked with both Commerce Bank and loggers to do the valuation and the actuarial study to determine the best application of those funds. That will be completed by the end of this fiscal year, with $6.8 million being distributed to loggers to help meet the unfunded liability that remains as part of our continued buyout for those years of service for our police and fire to be in the loggers program.
Does that catch us up, or we have more yet to do?
We are on a 30-year payoff schedule for the unfunded liability for loggers, so we're still working through it. But just to clarify, all retirement claims are being paid out to our employees. We're just backfilling that as we go. Just quickly as well, I participated in a five-city affordable housing roundtable last week that was put together by Churches Together for Justice in Webster Groves. This was a meeting for cities to share their affordable housing aspirations, goals, and legislation to date, as well as discussing strategies amongst ourselves. The takeaway from that meeting is that our elected officials should be invited and involved if they wish to participate in the discussion. So, I will be communicating information about that next meeting as it becomes available. I am also making an introduction to that group, to the members of Maplewood Next or the organizers of that group, as I understand that that is their primary focus and their advocacy efforts, and I think a regional response is warranted and overdue. So, I hope to have more to report on that, as well as to share with you about upcoming meetings. Then I will also let you know that we have instituted a complaint slash compliment portal for our police department on our website. Go test that if you wish and pay a compliment. That is integrated with our police evaluation and tracking software that they instituted last year that allows them to collect and gather data on their efforts in our community, and that will be provided in future annual reports that will be presented by the police department at the beginning of every fiscal year. And finally, I did provide a legislative update in your packet. Happy to answer any questions about what did and didn't go down in Jeff City. Obviously, Representative Reed is here to answer those questions as well, but I will note that the fact that groceries are still taxed in our community is a lifesaver, and appreciate advocacy efforts on our behalf.
One question on House Bill 595, the banning municipalities from creating ordinances that mandate that landlords accept federal housing assistance. We don't have any ordinances currently that this, that does anything with this, but do we expect there to be impacts there, since we have tenants' bill of rights, we have naturally occurring affordable housing in several places in our ordinances? Do we expect any impact there, or is that just?
I don't. City attorney, do you have a different interpretation of that?
Not right now, but I'm happy to give it a closer look as well.
That's it for my report.
Item number 12 is, is the second public comment. Has anyone signed up? I would like to use the opportunity to have a brief discussion. You know, the, and I should have done this before, so I apologize, but can you briefly describe, you're, you're going to have, it's a vape store there? Yeah, please.
No, it will be not a vape store.